This was part of the, again, as I mentioned, the Euro City, Euro Budget Town Hall meetings that we have been having throughout the city of Philadelphia to review and provide recommendations, to critique the proposed FY26 budget that has been proposed by the mayor. We want to make sure that we have your input as it relates to what you would like to see as we go through the budget negotiations. And as our chief financial officer of city council always like to remind us, this is only a proposal. Again, what you're going to see on the screen and what's going to be discussed this evening is only a proposal. So we're looking forward to your feedback as we shape the outcome of this proposal, as we work in partnership with our mayor, Sherrell Parker, but most importantly, making sure that the members of council are making sure we're adding your input, your ideas, and your concerns as it relates to what you want to see in your budget. And so with that being said, I'm going to turn the microphone over to council member, Dr. Anthony Phillips.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to thank all of you for coming today. I believe East Oak Lane is here today, right? I just want to, I'm so excited to bring this opportunity to East Oak Lane because this is a very fervent community, passionate, have ideas, and I wanted to make sure that your thoughts and your ideas, Kansas City Council, this is a citywide event. There's many people from across the Ninth District that are here today, from Alonee that's here today, we have Logan, we have Fern Rock, we have Mount Airy, we have West Oak Lane, we have Lower Northeast in the building as well, and so we're just thankful that all of you are here today. I just want to briefly also acknowledge and thank all of our council members, from Isaiah Thomas, who's a neighbor here, and then of course Cindy Bass, who's our northwest neighbor, and Jeffrey Young, and then also all of the staff that's here today. I want to acknowledge our fearless ward leader of this area, who is always making sure that he's in attendance at every important community meeting. He's always, has his ears and eyes to the neighborhood, Mr. Pete Lyte of the 61st Ward. Please stand. And because this is not a political event, his judge, his wife is here tonight, so we want to say thank you so much, Judge, for being here tonight, too. Also want to thank you, all the committee people at the 61st Ward, if y'all could please stand and be recognized, too. Thank you. All right. That was awesome. There they go, one more, get it right there. And we also have Ms. Paula Peoples, who's a first word committee person, but she's also representing Congress and Boyle's office tonight as well. And also want to thank our state partners who are here tonight, who said they were going to come and be supportive, our state representative, Anthony Bellman of Alonee of the area over there. And your state representative, Representative East Oak Lane, Ms. Darisha Parker is here tonight, too. And just, I'm going to take 30 seconds just to say, this year, we've accomplished a lot of things, things to the things that you have mentioned is important to all of you. Our student pedestrian bill has, it's in full effect that we put together as a result of your voices. You're seeing about 100 schools across the district that have speed cushions, including Elwood and its neighborhood. We authored the ski mask bill because of all many of you. We established a dangerous tree removal law, thanks to many of you, that basically removes trees on residential properties. We created a parent task force because you all asked for more parents to be engaged here. I was able to secure funding thanks to years of advocacy and Ninth District Council members for our dryways, and that's a pilot program, and some of you have seen the fruits of that. And we've also created a zoning bill that makes sure that says, in order for certain entities to come into our neighborhood, they have to listen to your voices first, because we here believe that the RCO process is important. And we revived and funded the return of the Uptown Classic Wise Worth Day. So... So, and our precious Alonee High School is getting funding for repairs to the field, and that has a lot to do with many of your voices, so I want to say thank you so much. We're looking forward to hearing what's important to you tonight, so be honest, be thoughtful, and also be short, so that we can get to everyone's comments and thoughts. Thank y'all so much, and I'm proud to serve you on Philadelphia City Council and work with these wonderful people to help make our city greater, and we're making progress as a team. Thank you so much. Thanks, Council President. He's amazing, too.
Thank you, Dr. Phillips. And so I am going to turn the microphone over to the chief executive officer, chief financial officer of city council, and she's going to give you an overview of the FY26 proposed budget. Turn the microphone over to Ms. Helen Lawhead.
Thank you, Council President. It's a pleasure to be here with you all tonight. So I'm going to walk through the FY26 budget. We're going to talk about what is a city budget. And so the budget is the city of Philadelphia's yearly plan that shows how much money will be spent on programs and services, and we know that how the city uses its resources has real impact on the lives of businesses, residents, and visitors. We're going to talk through a few key terms that I want to go over at the start, and you'll see throughout the presentation. And so when we talk about our budget, we usually talk about two main types of budgets. We have our operating budget, which pays for everyday services and programs, like library programs, building inspections, and it also covers personnel expenses, like our salaries for city workers, their retirement and benefits as well. And then we have our capital budget, which funds big, long-term projects, like building recreation centers or buying some of our larger vehicles, like our trash trucks or our fire trucks. And we're going to talk through the fiscal year 2026 budget, and when we say fiscal year, what we mean is a 12-month period that's used for budgeting and financial purposes. The city's fiscal year runs from July 1st to June 30th, so for fiscal year 2026, that will start on July 1st, 2025, and end on June 30th, 2026. We're going to talk through a little bit about the revenues that the city collects to fund the operations throughout the year. These are taxes, locally generated non-tax revenue, like fines and fees, and then also revenue we receive from other governments, like our federal government and our state government. When we reference expenditures, that's really the money that's spent by the city on the operations during the fiscal year. And finally, we'll reference the fund balance, which is the money that's left over at the end of the fiscal year, after we've accounted for all the revenues and expenditures. This is really kind of the money that's left over in our savings at the end of the year. As we go into next fiscal year, the city is facing some fiscal challenges. Certainly, there's some federal uncertainty. The city is also negotiating all of its contracts with its municipal unions, and there are some high ongoing costs that the city has to continue to deal with. In order to respond to that, the city is putting reserves in place and setting aside some extra savings so that they can respond to different uncertainties. All right, so as we get into some of the key highlights for the upcoming year's budget, over the next five years, this budget proposal includes $2.3 billion in new operating spending. Again, that's the spending on those day-to-day services and programs, and nearly $1.5 billion in capital investments, those are those long-term infrastructure investments. This plan also includes a few proposals to change the tax rates in the city, and we'll talk through a few of those. So this budget is proposing changes to Philadelphia's tax system, especially the taxes on businesses and workers. So it includes a proposal to reduce the business income and receipt tax, this is our business tax, and it also includes a proposal to lower the wage tax for both non-residents and residents. This proposal also includes a change to the way that we exempt certain levels of our business tax, and so in order to respond to that, the city is proposing to set aside $30 million per year or $150 million over the next five years to help small businesses respond to this change. There are also some changes that are proposed that are targeted towards some of the major initiatives that the mayor is proposing. So in order to help fund and support the home initiative, this is the housing program that the mayor is proposing, there is an elimination of the construction impact tax, a proposal to increase the real estate transfer tax, a proposal to raise the document recording fee, and these would all go to support the home initiative. There is also a proposal to increase the portion of the real estate tax that the city collects and then sends to the school, and then also to raise the on-street parking in Center City by a dollar, and this would go to the school district as well. And so as we look at the operating budget for fiscal year 26, the city is proposing to spend nearly $356 million in new spending, and the largest portion of that is focused on public safety. So 186 million, a little over 50% of that new spending would be focused on public safety. And as we look at our capital budget, the city is proposing to spend $337 million in new spending in the next fiscal year. Largest portion of that is going towards clean and green initiatives. This is cleaning up our neighborhoods, our streets, so $122 million focused on clean and green. And then the second largest portion, again, public safety, proposing to spend nearly 120 million, or 35% of the new spending. And so some of the highlights and the key priority areas. And so for public safety, some of the key funding initiatives here is 67 million over five years for a new forensic science center, 25 million in FY26 for the upcoming year for anti-violence grants, and then additional spending for body cameras for our prison staff, and then additional spending as well for Vision Zero to include an increase on-street safety. Our clean and green initiatives include some spending to expand citywide cleaning program and district-based cleaning program in our residential areas, additional funding to help support planters and beautification along our commercial corridors, and then additional spending as well for our mural arts program in advance of 2026 events. When we look at the investments the city is proposing to make for economic opportunity for all, some of the key highlights here are $10 million in workforce development through the City College of Municipal Employment, nearly $9 million going towards the Pennsylvania Horticultural Society, and additional funding as well for some studying in our Center City This plan also includes an additional $12 million to go towards the school district, and this is going to help support the extended day, extended year program that the mayor has launched, expanding that program from 25 to 40 schools and serving up to 9,700 students for before and after-school care, and then an additional 15 million over five years to the Community College of Philadelphia to support its workforce development programs. All of this increased spending is in addition to $280 million that the city makes and contributes to the school district on an annual basis. We want to close out with a few highlights here focusing on the mayor's proposal for housing. So the city is proposing to borrow a total of 800 million, and this would support the Housing Opportunities Made Easy Initiative. And over the next five years, the city will need $263 million to help pay off that borrowing to support this program. It would also create additional positions to execute on the program. The city is also setting aside $550 million in its labor reserve, so again, the city is negotiating its contracts with all its labor unions, and so they have to make sure we have reserves set aside so we can negotiate those contracts. Finally, the city is setting aside $216 million in operating funds and $75 million in capital funds to support the mayor's wellness initiative, and this brings the capital investment total to 175 million by that time. And finally, the city is also setting aside funding for the events that will take place in our city in 2026, and so the city is contributing 100 million towards those initiatives. Some of that has already been spent this year, more will be spent next year, and that's in addition to 500 million that the airport is separately investing into our 2026 events. And so again, these are some of the highlights of the proposal, and so city council is finishing up their hearings over the next couple of weeks to tweak this proposal and reach a final adopted budget. And so with that, I'm going to turn it back over to the council president so we can hear from you.
Thank you very, excuse me, thank you very much, Helen. I want to also take a moment to acknowledge Dr. Bernard Downing, who opened up the doors of his church, Oak Lane Presbyterian. And I come by way of Tasker Street Baptist Church, under the leadership of Reverend James A. Lovett. So it's an honor to be here. And so with that being said, so we're going to have you come to, how many microphones do we have? We have, oh, we have two microphones, and it started at arms, well, escort you to the microphones. You could line up, you'll have two minutes to talk about what you would like to see in the budget. Here's some ground rules. Here's some ground rules. Please do not give a dissertation. Please do not give your whole testimony, right? Just either ask your question, or we really want you to ask your question, but be brief and give us your recommendations. And we would like to do that to keep the process moving, but we want everyone, as many people as possible, to have a chance to talk, and if you have two minutes, and you took the first 90, and then maybe the last 30 to ask your question, we want to have ample amount of time to respond. And so is that okay? Is it all right? Okay, all right. With that being said, I'm going to turn everything over to the host, and also now, my nana told me to do things in decency and order, so there's a seasoned person here asks, could members stand up when they talk so people can know who they are, right? And so I'm always a humble young man, raised by my nana, so I'm going to put that request out to the members. Where's the young lady at, John? Where's she at? Where's she at? What a young lady at. I said, can she move up? She said, no. Like, Ms. Mitchell? I'm going to follow Ms. Mitchell. I don't want no smoke, so. I'm city council president, Kenyatta Johnson, and I'm here with my colleagues. I'm going to turn the microphone over to Dr. Anthony Phillips, who's the host, council member.
All right. I'm just going to stand up real quickly. I meant to say Paula McKinnney. I don't know why I had the singer in mind for some reason. She's here from Congress and Boyle's office, and I just want to quickly acknowledge that, and also all the members of OCA that are here today, too. All right, so we're ready for our, and thank you, Pastor, for opening the doors. Are we ready for our questions? Thank you. Uh, the mic is over there. So everyone just line up at the mic. Line up at the mic. There's a mic, uh, yup, it's right there, and there's one over here, it's on both sides. So, and we'll go back and forth, so the quicker you get there, the quicker you get your question up. All right, over here. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Bader Wahhi. I want to just offer something for the budget, a social media, a social media centralized office in which...
One second, so we're having a little technical difficulties with the mic over there. Now we spending all your tax dollars, and we can't get this right? Here you go, sir. John, give him this mic. Oh, it's on now? Okay.
Hello. An office of centralized social media where all the different departments are centralized in one area for communication, which will allow them to communicate with others and the people who actually put comments on that social media so that they can be verified and then it be pushed to whoever it needs to be. For the 250-year celebration, it was really a look to get some of the youth that involved, especially those in youth groups, soccer teams, but also because we don't have anybody born in 1776 and 1876, those born in 1976, to help represent and partner with those youth groups as a representation as 76ers for Philadelphia, in which they would be act as guides, they can show the history of Philadelphia within that 250-year period, is other things that they can do as being resources. And last is, it's for the World Cup, since there'll be a bunch of different cultures coming. For the centralized area that you have that's like a safety access, is it also where you're spacing off different parts of that, whereas like you have in Philadelphia, Africa Town, Chinatown, and so forth and so on? So those people coming may feel comfortable in going to their cultures and exploring other cultures and the differences?
So I will say this, is that, you know, the council member next to me has been talking about the use, the usage of social media to promote everything in the city of Philadelphia. Oh, yeah. She got to stand. Ms. Mitchell ain't playing either. All right, so Councilman Thomas has been leading a lot of our voice on city council around making social media something that has been, like, something that we need to use more to promote things such as jobs and opportunities. And so the tech, the technology department in our city, which is the office of our communication services, said there is foreign ways to do more things, but yes, every department in the city of Philadelphia has the social media, but there is the Philly Mayor account, and there's also the City of Philadelphia account, and then we also have our council account. So you have to literally, for other cert, like, office of clean and green, everyone has a different social media. So right now, that's, that's the way it is. As far as 2026, I'm at, bring it over there. 2020, ooh, wow, sorry. 2026, real quick, so we have invested, and even in the latest mid-year, myself, council member Bass to my left, of course, under the guidance of council president and the members of the appropriations committee, just recently put in about another $5 million for 2026-based initiatives on top of the 3.5 we did a couple of months ago, which puts us as a city well over $75 million invested in 2026. Now, the question was specifically about young people. We have a number of different, I'm sorry, we have a number of different initiatives that's going to be focused on putting young people in a position to be able to take advantage of sports-based programming in collaboration with the major events that are going to be here. Two sports that we're really trying to push next year, soccer, obviously because of FIFA, but also baseball because of the Major League Baseball All-Star Game. Both sports, especially when we're talking about across the entire city, they're not what they used to be, especially when I was growing up. So we want to encourage the young people not just to meet the celebrities, but get involved in activities, and you'll see a number of different initiatives and events that's going to launch starting in the fall to prepare people for different things that's happening. I'm hoping to work with council member Phillips later to be able to have a 2026 preparedness conversation in the Ninth District and in every other district across the city that's willing to do it. Last but not least, you asked about the content creators. We actually started a pilot program in my office for content creators where they could submit a proposal on a specific issue that they want to elevate in the city of Philadelphia. We actually try to give them a small compensation to be able to do that because we recognize that content creators are the new way to get news and media and information out there. So we're, we're thinking in a similar capacity than what the gentleman is that just spoke, but we haven't found a way to centralize that through all city agencies. So that'll take some time, but we'll take it back as a homework assignment. Thank you. Thank you. Over here.
Hello, everyone. My name is Barbara, and I'm from the West Oak Lane area. And my question may not have anything to do with the budget, but in listening to Word radio continuously for the past, I don't know how many years, my question relates to the sugar tax. So how are we rolling that out now? Is it going to be eliminated, or will it continue? Because I think it was found that it was not feasible anymore as far as, you know, because people were just, you know, not buying soda or sugar here in Philadelphia. So I was wondering how, how's that coming along?
I haven't seen a report that said it's not feasible. I do know from my experience, I think we're bringing about 75 million this year, I'm sorry, 65 million this year, but here's what I do know. That tax has supported thousands of children the opportunity to receive a high-quality early childhood education from that tax. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Mitchell. She back there like scowling, too. So I do know in the past, right, under the last administration, which was Jim Kennedy, and where the bill was passed and the tax was implemented, thousands of young people have benefited from that, and then also under Parks and Recreation, under the rebuild initiative, right? We can't rebuild every single playground, but most of our key playgrounds based upon projects that district council members have picked are being rebuilt from the ground up so every young person can have a high-quality park and recreational facility in their district. And so we'll see what the future of it looks like, but right now, we're making much progress in terms of how the tax has been used. Now, what we did have, what we have seen is the amount coming in has become less and less. How much was it last year up the top? About, well, about a million less between last year and this year, meaning people are drinking less soda, but nevertheless, I know the benefits of that tax actually went to good use, and so I stand on that.
So the facts, we, the city brings in about $75 million a year currently for that soda tax. 65, so it dropped recently. All right, 65. All right, thank you.
Hello, how you guys doing? My name is Christina Faith. I'm the owner of The Grindhouse Inc. and Creative Thought Media. How you doing, Pastor Bernard? With the seminary together. All right, so I run a media company that also is a marketing and production agency, and I'm really concerned about the BRIT tax, right? When we think about Philadelphia in a 100-mile radius, it is actually the best place to do business, and when people are thinking about doing business in Philadelphia and in Pennsylvania, we kind of like turn away from it mainly because we're being taxed on a gross, on an additional tax versus being taxed on our net. And so what I'd like to ask and propose is that we either do one of two things, we lower the BRIT tax, but also that we lower the BRIT tax through taxing our net, not our gross.
So I'm just going to add something to that. So currently, in the mayor's proposal, there is a steady decrease that is being proposed to the BRIT tax. And the reason why this is being proposed, and I understand people say, okay, why would we decrease taxes for businesses? In the city of Philadelphia, even in this district alone, 49% of the people, 51%, excuse me, 51% of the residents who live in the Ninth District have jobs outside of the city of Philadelphia, meaning that they commute outside of the city of Philadelphia. Why? Because unfortunately, and, well, I don't say fortunately, unfortunately, but in places like Los Angeles, Chicago, Texas, companies that have the ability to hire people, they go to those places because there's no business taxes or lower business taxes than other cities. So if we want to create jobs in the city of Philadelphia, we have to find a way to attract businesses so we can create jobs, and so people will want to stay in the Philadelphia so our population doesn't decrease. So the problem that we're trying to figure out is how do we keep our revenue that we're going to need, need for our roads, our schools, and other places while also finding ways to keep our businesses here? And the reason why these taxes were made is because the city unfortunately doesn't make a lot of money off of the wage tax because people don't have, in the city of Philadelphia, we're one of the highest poverty area cities in the, in the nation. So we don't make a lot of money off of, off of individual property taxes or wages. So we began to tax our businesses, but that also has come with a lack of job growth. So this is an exploration that we do need to have, and I actually, I was in a conversation today about that with someone who also mentioned that from our business community. So we're hearing both sides. We're hearing about we need the taxes for our, for our, our city services, but we're also hearing that we need it for job growth. Somewhere in the, in the middle, we got to come to the middle ground on that.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Vallee Ferrera. I'm from the beautiful East Oak Lane area, and I want to thank you for coming out and allowing us to be heard this evening. I had two questions, but I do have one comment to Congressman Evans. We can rebuild every playground, it's just a matter of finding a way to do it and making it a priority.
I didn't know Congressman Evans was up here.
I'm, I'm sorry.
I guess I know you, I know you're in his neighborhood.
You know what I'm talking about, so I apologize.
I know he's a congressman, the former chairman of appropriations, and yes, man, we can, over a period of time, yes, we can rebuild. I know he's a congressman and former chairman of appropriations. And yes, ma'am, we can, um, over a period of time, yes, we can rebuild all of our parks and our recreational facilities. Absolutely, we can. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
So my two questions are, one, are there any funds in the budget? Or can we talk about putting funds in the budget to have mental health professionals come alongside our police department so that we're not um, engaging someone that's truly having a mental health problem and treating them as though they are really a threat to all of society? And then the second question was, in the budget, there's money for wellness programs? What are those wellness programs? What, what's in that budget?
The second part of your question?
The second part was you mentioned, um, money for the wellness programs. So I was wondering what those are.
I just want to briefly acknowledge that our majority leader, Catherine Gilmore Richardson, has arrived tonight too. Did it, did anyone want to take that question? Yep, so I'll take it. We're trying to share. Um, so as it relates to responding to emergency situations, we've had a program that we put together in the city of Philadelphia where we have mobile crisis units. And what it is, is it's a dual-response program where it's not just police. So when you call 911 and there's some type of mental health issue, we do have pilot programs that exist in the city of Philadelphia, and we're in negotiations right now to figure out what does it look like to assess how well they're doing, what we need to do to get a little bit better, and how we can possibly expand what's working well. So that is something that's already in existence to a certain extent. Um, we recognize the need for it, and we're trying to find two tweaks to make it a little bit better. So that's answering one question. I'm sorry, Councilwoman Bass reminded me, it's 988. That's what you call to get that response. Thank you, colleague. And there's a, there's actually a significant amount of funding in the budget this year for the wellness center. Uh, Helen, you had that cop, uh, so essentially, the mayor of the city of Philadelphia recognized that we cannot demonize people who are drug users. We have to find a way to get those drug users treatment. So we're investing millions of dollars, I'm trying to figure out the exact number, $216 million into a wellness center that's gonna host hundreds of people at a time for the, as a, as a rehab for that they're gonna get, you know, physical therapy, they're gonna have social, mental health, job training, all that and more within this wellness center in northeast. And that's gonna help us with the King's Ten incident, is situation, but also if anybody that's going through serious drug issues in the city. And of course, we're working with our school district. They have a counselor at every school in terms of wel- well, that's not wellness, but it's mental health stuff. Yes, the answer to your question, yes, is in the budget. Thank you.
Okay. And can I ask you to just clarify that these are not safe injection sites? These are truly rehab centers?
They are not safe injection sites. Actually, um, nine of the 10 council districts voted not to have safe injection sites. And so there's no safe injection sites allowed at this current moment in the city of Philadelphia, and there's not one being built in that one district. So just so you know.
Yep.
So. Greetings and good evening. I am council member Catherine Gilmore Richardson, grateful to be, uh, back in the great ninth councilmatic district represented by my colleague, uh, Anthony Phillips. I just wanted to add to the question relative to the Wellness Village. Today, we did pass our, uh, mid-year transfer ordinance, which is shifting money, uh, in the middle of the fiscal year. Uh, and as a part of that transfer, there was $40 million, um, for the wellness ecosystem, um, which will total, um, for fiscal year 26 through 3216 million dollars. There's also dollars that will help with the capital investment, which is infrastructure for the Riverview facility, um, that is, um, coming online, which is in the sixth council district. So I just wanted to add that because we just passed the mid-year at today's council session, uh, this morning. Thank you very much.
So actually, my name is Yvette Young, and I live in East Oak Lane, uh, a block over from the church. Um, the first part of my question actually about, was about what was in the budget for particularly homelessness. Because people are homeless for a lot of reasons, and not just drugs, but people who, whose houses burned down or they lose their houses because they don't have insurance, or because they can't pay their rent because they lost their jobs. So homelessness, I think we've gotten too comfortable with seeing people riding on septa, sit, laying down on the streets, trying to be warm. I mean, we've gotten too comfortable watching people and stepping over them, and we really be, need to become good Samaritans and include as much money in the budget as it takes to help these people get from off of the street because you can't have a five-star city with the amount of homeless people that we have downtown and riding on our transportation systems. Uh, the second question I have is about particularly privatization. Uh, there's been a wave of privatization, not just in the Trump administration where he's firing, uh, public, I'm sorry, federal employees and privatizing those jobs with Elon Musk, but we've done it in the city. We privatized Vet Stadium. It became Jeffrey Lory's, uh, for that 30-year term period. So instead of that revenue coming to the city, now that revenue goes to Jeffrey Lory. Um, the state building, instead of buildings that we own, now we're paying high rent uh, to other people to house our, our offices. So are we doing anything with the public bank? Um, uh, public clinics, uh, uh, increasing funding for them, especially in light of these nonprofit hospitals and schools who are making billions of dollars and not paying any taxes while you are killing the, the, the people that are living in the city, that are, that love this city and are staying in the city with taxes? The taxes at my mother's house have gone from $1,100 to $3,200, and my taxes have gone up to $4,600. Thank God for the Homestead Act, but you are killing us with taxes. And we need for you to go after some of the people, and I'm not saying churches, but some of the nonprofits who really are not nonprofits. And also, in addition to that, just think about privatization and making sure that you're prioritizing public employees and public infrastructure, and that you're not taking away even rec centers and playgrounds and properties and giving them to these behemoth schools and hospitals and reducing what our children have, uh, in the city.
Yeah, I just want to mention for the issue of homelessness, there's $84 million in this budget, um, to address it. But I'm also gonna have, um, my majority to talk about, um, funding is one thing, so there's $84 million in funding, but we also want to make sure we're funding the programs that's actually doing the work in getting the people off the street. And she has taken the lead to make sure we're being fiscally responsible with this $84 million. But most importantly, the Office of Homeless Services really come up with a strategy and a plan to get people off the street. I also have, um, a, a roundtable, um, task force specifically dealing with homelessness, and also dealing with homelessness amongst the youth, right? Councilman Isaiah Thomas recently held a town hall addressing that issue. We know for a fact that homelessness isn't just somebody when you walk outside sitting on the ground or asking for money. You also have children and families living from house to house. And so I'm gonna ask for majority of Gilmore Richardson, since she's the foremost person working on this issue, to please respond.
Thank you. Thank you so much, uh, Council President Johnson. Uh, actually, tomorrow will be our hearings, uh, in budget for the Office of Homeless Services. So your question is right on time, Yvette. Uh, but I have been able to take, uh, with my colleagues and the support of my colleagues, a real deep dive uh, in the homeless services over the past two years. Uh, and what we initially found was that uh, some of the providers, uh, were not providing good quality service, uh, to the constituents that were interfacing with the system. And so how I started on this journey was a family contact at my office, a mother with five children, uh, asking to be placed at a shelter over the weekend. And I contacted the intake facility for weekend service. I didn't identify myself, not because I, I, I was just trying to help. And I had horrible service. I received horrible service. And so from there, um, I've done an investigative journey, uh, with my team around homeless services, and we're working with the administration to ensure that, um, not only we have good quality providers, but that everyone goes through a process, that no one is arbitrarily just picking this person because they know them or they want to give them a contract. Everybody has to go through an RFP process in order to do business with the city. That's one. Uh, but two, we also found that even for the providers that were providing good service to the city, many of them weren't being paid. So as an example, we had some providers who were owed millions and millions of dollars from the city. And we worked directly with the administration to get that rectified. Everybody was paid, uh, as of the end of last year. Um, and now we are going through a, a process to continue to reform the Office of Homeless Services. We have a ballot question on the ballot, um, for this upcoming election, um, to have Office of Homeless Services, um, as bud person, who would be an advocate, someone who can investigate complaints within the homeless system, and someone, uh, to really advocate on behalf of our unhoused community. Because as our council president stated, we have many families who are couch surfing, right? It's, it's the unseen version of homelessness and homelessness prevention, um, that we have to work on. And so we're gonna continue that. Uh, we did increase their budget by $15 million and over the last, uh, five or so years by another $35 million. But we do that because we know there's a need. But while we're doing that, people have to do the right thing with those dollars and ensure we're actually helping people because we don't want to hear stories that you'd rather stay on the street and not go into a shelter. So that's what we're working towards. And I invite each of you uh, to watch the hearings tomorrow on Channel 64, um, to go to phl council dot com slash watch, um, and watch the homeless services hearings tomorrow. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Rhonda and I live in Alny. I just have two questions. A little closer. One, um, what sale price are we considering affordable for Philadelphia? We hear the word affordable a lot, but what sale price? What range? Based on the median income? Affordable housing is a term that's used a lot, but what's affordable to one person is not affordable to another person. So we have money earmarked to build affordable housing. So what is going, what are these homes gonna be sold for? What price range? Three hundred thousand, four hundred thousand, five hundred? And what is it gonna be based on?
Yeah, we're going through the process right now to come up with a comprehensive vision on for the city. We know the area of median income in our city doesn't reflect the, the federal area of median income. And so a lot of conversations that we're having right now is what does that look like for individual district council members, right, that they're comfortable with? And so one area may vary versus another area, and so I'm not gonna give a, a specific number. Well, I'll be frank, I know in my area, um, in South Philadelphia, because we've seen a significant amount of development, it may range like between two, 250. That's the turn, the average turnkey home right now is 200 to one, 250 and go as high as to 280, right?
Okay.
And through the city turnkey program, you'll get 70 million, you'll get 70,000 off of it, right? Did it bring it down to somewhere around 190? The bank could give you additional 10, right? But also, we have to be mindful that separate from that price point, we talk about affordable, we also have to make sure we take care of low-income housing. I know up in the northwest, uh, but we also have to make sure that those who are most vulnerable, right, also have a time, have a chance to become, um, first-time home buyers. And so what we're doing is sitting around the table with my colleagues because we do know that the area of median income that we follow in terms of the federal government doesn't really reflect the city of Philadelphia. So some people like to say, we don't want to pose the haves against the have-nots, right? And so we're trying to come up with a way where we, we're being comprehensive and a balanced approach, um, for everyone. So, and it's, and it's not easy, to be quite frank with you. But that's why I, I, I rely upon my district council members that know what's best for their neighborhood, right? To really provide input on what this proposal looks like in terms of the 30,000 units of, um, housing that's being proposed. And I'm sure my members of council and the administration have worked together to come out with something that's conducive for everyone.
So basically, it's gonna be based on, uh, the district? It's gonna determine?
No, I think members will have conversations with the administration, right, and will come up with, with a, a method in terms of what we're comfortable with. And for instance, in my district, I do everything on, for under 80% area of median income, right? When RFPs come to the city of Philadelphia, where we provide housing for individuals. But I know other members who charge, who allow 100%. But I have another colleague who wants to go as low as 60%. So it, it does vary because we know what's best for our actual neighborhoods. And so that's why it, it may vary based upon neighborhood to neighborhood. But I'm glad you asked that question because at the end of the day, we have to follow what the people want. We have to follow what the neighbors request us when it comes to the area of median income for what we think is affordable housing.
Well, that leads me into my second part of my question. Would you consider building more ranchers for the 55-plusers? Cause a lot of us are in affordable homes, but we have nowhere to go, and we don't need to move into more homes with steps. So we would love to sell our homes that's close to schools and shopping and parks and all the recreation. We don't need that anymore. I would love to sell that at an affordable price to a young family, but I need somewhere to go. So a lovely rancher out in the northeast or something, a little two, three bedrooms. Put, you know, grandmom in the back room and still have my garden. Cause I don't want to go into an apartment. I don't want to, you know, scale down. Yeah, well, I'm, I grew up on the northwest side, so we tend to go across. So that's my suggestion. Please consider
Yes, ma'am, that's a great idea.
Building some ranchers for the 55-plusers earmarked for 55 plus.
Yes, I like that.
We, we have equity. We have money from the sale of our previous homes, so we won't qualify, nor will, we might not need as many programs as you would need for first-time home buyers.
Yes.
And my last Google search, we comprise about 15 to 20% of the population in Philadelphia, so that would potentially free up about 20% of your affordable homes.
It's a great idea.
That are already upgraded and ready to sell.
So I just want to throw something out there. And first of all, I agree with everything the council president says. He's absolutely right. But on top of that, we do have a program in the city, and, and I do think that that's a phenomenal idea, so thank you for that perspective. But we do have a program in the city of Philadelphia that all of us on city council are proud of called the Neighborhood Preservation Initiative. And if you haven't seen it on the news or on social media, it's a phenomenal program that allows Philadelphia residents, specifically first-time home buyers, so definitely a different option than what you just discussed, uh, currently, but allows first-time home buyers to be able to buy a home uh, for approximately $175,000 with approximately $100,000 of equity already built in as long as you qualify for the program and you follow the guidelines of the program. So I did want to throw some numbers out there. That what council president said was 100% right though, right? Because the, the district council members and what goes on uh, determines a lot of what happens with land. But I always like to promote that program specifically because sometimes in certain neighborhoods, what's gonna be affordable is gonna change like what the council president said. But the Neighborhood Preservation Initiative is our way of trying to put, uh, equity in the hands of first-time home buyers who are definitely residents of the city of Philadelphia. So I just wanted to add that context to the conversation, but thank you for your recommendation.
Now, this is my majority whip, so I'm definitely not rebuttling him, but I got, uh, Word is listening. So I want to be clear, because if we say we're selling houses for 175,000, uh, we are selling them for 175,000, but that's based upon you will come in at probably 280 if it's 80% AMI. And this is under his initiative we talked about, which is called Turn the Key. We will give you a $70,000, right? It's like a soft loan where you pretty much is gonna pay it back incorporated into your mortgage over a very, very long period of time, which basically you're paying nothing. And then with the banks that we're working with, we're gonna give you additional between 10 and 15,000 dollars to get you under that $200,000 threshold. And I'll say this, some people say, well, that's a whole lot. Let me tell you something. Let me tell you something. We talking about brand-new house built from the ground up, right? Brand-new house built from the ground up. And you can't really get that anywhere in terms of where you, where you're moving at throughout the city of Philadelphia. So my colleague is definitely right. I just wanted to clarify that one part because our phones will be calling tomorrow and it's it, but you said, no, we just wanted to be clear. Here's how you get that number down to about buck seventy or buck eighty. And for me, that's a steal, right? And also want to acknowledge your hard working. This guy is like the Energizer Bunny. I mean, he like his dad. State Senator Sharif Street, thank you for being here. Thank you. Oh, this is our lawyer on, on the team.
Thank you. So I just want to piggyback on the, the question about the different style of housing. So my office has been looking at ways to change our zoning code to make sure that it's easier to build those smaller houses for seniors. It's just a matter of finding the, the land where we have available land to develop and build those types of, of communities that, you know, those seniors and other folks of lower means will want to live comfortably, right? So I've gone to different places where, you know, it's a one-story, one-story building, but three bedrooms, two bathrooms, right? And that is the amount of space that a young family would need or senior would need to age in place where they are. So that's something we're looking into in our zoning code. And for my, for my district specifically, we're looking at where available land is in order to develop that type of product that the community want to see.
All right. So, good evening. I'm Kathy Garrett Davis and I live here in East Oak Lane. And one thing I want to say is that not all of us who are looking to be first-time home buyers in East Oak Lane have money to spend four and five hundred thousand dollars for that first-time home. So I am looking forward to hearing more about what you're doing with that. I, I have several questions, but I'm going to try to condense them. So one question I have is about the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for this Market East study to see, you know, what's going to be done with that. And my question is, why is that money necessary when presumably you did all kinds of studies when you were looking at what to do with that area to make it, you know, the new Seventy-Sixers Stadium? The other questions I have, and again, I'm going to consolidate these, since Mayor Parker has said that she is the quality of life mayor, my concern from what I see from traveling throughout not only this area, but really throughout different parts of Philadelphia, but especially up here in this area where it didn't happen before, there's a lot of graffiti that is showing up on those city trash cans, on, at the bus stops. There are a lot of thefts that are going on by young people that's causing some of these stores to close, like Rite Aid's. And I know that there's another CVS that's planning to close. And I want to know what's being done about that. What are we doing to maybe encourage young people to, I don't know, be more responsible, stay out of trouble as a public safety issue? And then my, my final question is, I know that the community schools were started under Mayor Kenny, and I want to know, are they going to continue? Are they going to expand? And how are they connected to the extended-day, extended-year projects within the schools? Are, are those extended-year, extended-day programs going to be in those community schools? Are they going to different schools? Those are my, my three questions. And thank you.
I'll just, I'll be brief. I know the mayor has invested significantly in the extended-day program that allows young people to go to school beyond the traditional school hours. And I think it's up to, if I'm correct, I think it's a total, we will have at least forty schools, a combination of public and charter. I'm assuming, and I can't say definitely, but I'm assuming it would still be off, under the Office of Education, which works in partnership with the community schools, but I can't definitively say if that's the case. But I do know she made a commitment to expand all-day school, year-round school, and part of that process was partnering with public schools. But also, I give a lot of credit for partnering with charter schools because sometimes people pick the public versus the charter schools, but they're all our kids. And so when I see a young person get murdered outside of a charter school, I get a call from the parent that I have to talk to, and she's not saying, well, my kid go to a public school or charter schools, how can you help me save my son or address the issue? So she did put a, step up and say, you know what? I'm going to make this plan a part of both of the school systems, and I do respect her for doing that. So that part, all my can answer.
Let me just take a stab, and I've been taking copious notes tonight. Seventy, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the Market East study. I just have to say that that's important to the city of Philadelphia. What we, what we have in Market East right now is a disaster. And unfortunately, it was even more something that we could have done a long time ago is have these plans, community meetings and discussions about Market East. So the, the money is going to go towards a dedicated person who's going to focus on it. The money's going to go towards the costs that's going to, to pay the consultants to help us look at it, and then also all the other materials that goes towards it. So, you know, as much, there's, there's things that cost to bring focus to something like this. And also, we're getting the Seventy-Sixers to be involved with that process, too. Number two, communities and schools, they work. And we got to find a way to keep the ones that we have. Currently, the community schools program still exists. They're at certain number of schools in the city of Philadelphia, but we're not, they're not, we're not expanding them. Twenty, twenty of them. And so they haven't been expanded yet. What's being expanded is the after-school, extended-day programs, which is kind of like community and schools. I recognize that there's a lot of young people whose parents have to pay four to six hundred dollars a month just for aftercare. And hopefully, this could be the, the help, you know, these families that don't have to pay for aftercare because they're going to be open at six o'clock. So we got to keep expanding these aftercare, these, these after-school programs, extended-day that's happening. So I'm with you. I also want to mention that Forty-Ninth District, people are really concerned about this. So there has been a lot of discussion about basic systems home repair, the adaptive modification program. It's been a lot of discussion about that program, those programs, the preservation programs, some of the housing, affordable housing programs, they need to be for people who make less than forty, thirty thousand dollars a year. We know that we have houses in this district, also in Councilman O'Neill's district, Councilman Driscoll's district, in the fourth district, even in Council of Bastard's district, that people are working, they have a little bit more money above the income level that is required for home preservation. So what a lot of council members are excited about, for the first time ever, the mayor is proposing to increase the income levels so you're around close to six figures, right? To, so you could be able to, with a one-person household, close to around seventy, eighty thousand dollars, where you could actually say, if you had two-person households, probably close to a hundred thousand dollars or so, you could actually request a home repair situation for your house, too. And that's the fairness that she's trying to do. Because if you drive by even houses in East Oak Lane, West Oak Lane, my area, people own their homes, but they just don't often have the ability to fix them. And that's what she's trying to address in this budget. And I hope that we able to do more like that.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Kenny Blair. My question is around the economic and jobs opportunity that keep hearing but not seeing. And I'm not seeing it because for the past, since this election, I've driven around all the rebuild that are going on in the city with the rec centers. And they all have slowed down because of fourteen, sixteen hundred in DC. Because they've hired mostly a lot of out-of-country workers. So I asked this in a community meeting and I got chewed out by my state rep. And I'm asking again, because our young men and some young ladies, and there's a young man, I took him and I've been taking him to work and now he has his own car because he got in and he showed them that he was willing to work. He didn't have a drug issue, he have, he just had an issue with getting in the door to work. Since all these rebuild programs have slowed up because of them not hiring people in the neighborhood, which you negotiated during that rebuild con, bill when Mayor Kenny was in office, why have we not seen the information given out to the different neighborhoods about where to go get training, to get the job and so forth? And if they don't succeed on the job, then it's on them. But the initial information did not come from you. And even today, I've, I went and called different offices to find out about it. And I never forget when I asked State Rep Kenyatta, and he said, there's a thing where the Old William Penn at DC three thirty-eight. And I called his office and they acted like far as scum, stupid is the stupid dove. We don't know what you're talking about. And so here we are, going into the summer, when Councilman Phillips came in, I questioned him about why two rec centers in Alny are closed at the same time. We got one open, but the biggest one is now at a snail's pace because they don't have workers. Plenty of young people in this neighborhood and in southwest Philly where your district is off of Forty-Eighth and Chester slowed down, Forty-Ninth and Chester, King Sessi, it has slowed down because of bodies.
That's not my district, sir.
But, well, I'm sorry. But it's not too far. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Council President. But in a nutshell, where can they go to get certified and trained? And don't just say it here, put it on your website. Put it in the newspaper. Put it on U R D. Put it everywhere so I will give it to them and I'll push them there. I got one in.
We got something for you right now. Would you like a manual of all the programs the city of Philadelphia has to offer? I want to turn it over to Kathy.
No, 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 not, not just put it, but put it on your website. Your, everything, y'all, y'all hid by the internet during pandemic, but still, if it's on the website, I would know it and I'll get it to them.
Thank you for the recommendation.
Sir, sir, I want to thank you very, very much for that question and for your willingness to personally take a young person to look for an opportunity. And I feel the frustration that you are expressing, which was the reason why in my first year as a member of city council, I created for the first time in the city of Philadelphia an apprenticeship guidebook where it lists every single pre-apprenticeship and apprenticeship program in the city of Philadelphia. But in addition to that, and it's on my website and we share it, but in addition to that, we do a Labor Fridays program and we keep a repository of those programs with all of our unions on our Facebook page so you can go back at any time and re-watch the program, learn how you can apply, where to go, what you need. And I always tell the young people, if you have some type of impediment, whether it be a driver's license, which council president introduced legislation today to address young people in the school district to get their driver's licenses, because we know that's an impediment with the application process. So we're looking at this at every point in the process. But I'm going to make sure I come over and speak with you directly to give you the website information, to get any information of a young person that may be looking for an opportunity. But in addition to that, in this proposed budget, there's ten million dollars that's set aside for workforce development, particularly for our apprenticeship programs in the labor field. But also-
Is that, is that based upon the sugar tax?
No, sir. This is, no, sir.
Hold on.
No, sir.
The rebuild was based upon the sugar tax.
So we're talking about two different things.
But I understand, but the rebuild was based upon the sugar tax. I know there's been some, he said early, there's been a decrease in that. But yet still, the information that you're speaking about now, and I remember when you got elected, is, no one knows.
And, and I, I receive what you're saying, and I want to make sure that, that you know. And we're going to continue to publicize it. And in fact, we've even had, where we set up gazebos, I remember going to Broad New York where we set up gazebos to take the actual labor unions with us. We've been, this is National Apprenticeship Week this week. We've gone to almost every single school. We were at Feltonville yesterday. Swenson Arts and Technology was in city council today. We've been to almost every school this week. We go out in the community and share this information. We don't want to keep this information. We want the community to benefit, which is why we do this work. And so I want to ensure that you have the most recent twenty twenty-five apprenticeship guidebook, number one. Number two, if you have a specific question about a specific recreation center, then we can address that as well because we also receive the list of information from Parks and Recreation for all the rebuilt sites, where the projects are in process, the scope of the RFPs that go out, what it will address, once the RFP and the contract is selected, what type of work they will do, and then how many people they will need for that project. And so it may seem slow, I understand that, but those projects are still ongoing. And it's a process that we have to go to, in fact, to also ensure that there's minority participation of contractors working on those websites. So it's a lot of things that we have to do to ensure we are representing the needs and the concerns of the community. So I'm going to take a moment with my phone and come over and speak with you in the back now so that we can get this rectified. Is that okay? All right.
Can I, can I, can I, also, sir, I wanted to add to that conversation, sir. Let me get his attention. So, but just a couple of things that I just wanted to add. My name is Cindy Bass and I represent the Eighth Council District. And one of the things that I just wanted to make note of is, well, actually, you had two points. One is that there were, you know, it's slowing down because of the worker shortage. At least in my district, that's not the case. It's slowing, if, if it is slowing, it's slowing because the cost of everything is going triple, double, triple. I had a project, Barrett Playground, which is in the Eighth Council District at Seventh and Lyndley. That project went from being nine million dollars to almost twenty million dollars right now. So when the, when the cost changes, we have to figure out, okay, where are we going to get that money from? Because we don't have extra money laying around, you know, assuming that these things will happen. Luckily, we've got, you know, like in my district, we've got some moneybags, State Senator Sharif Street and Teresa Parker, State Rep, you know, who have brought some resources back so that, to help us be able to pay for those items. The second thing I just want to note is that when rebuild was done, I actually was the chair of Parks and Recreation at that time. And one of the things I fought for is to make sure that project builders, who are sort of like the developers of these playgrounds, were local institutions. And so we've been able to work through all of our project developers, project builders, and get them to be the ones who sort of vet who's going to be working on those opportunities, having a chance to have those opportunities, to make sure that people from the neighborhood get every opportunity to participate. So maybe that's something we can expand further throughout the city for folks who want it in their district. But that's something that we really make sure that the project user is the one who is ensuring that it's someone local from the neighborhood who's being hired. So, thank you.
Yeah, and very briefly, sir, you know, the, the mayor has put forth a proposal for a, essentially, it's like a municipal college that kind of trains folks up to, that work directly in the city. So you do this, this workforce development program, it trains you to, for a job directly with the city of Philadelphia. So there are initiatives that we are putting in place. My office is hosting a job fair on May tenth for young people to come out. We have different workforce development programs, different apprenticeship programs. Folks who are hiring and also educational institutions are coming out. They're May tenth at CCP from eleven to two. So if you know any young people that's out there looking for opportunities to work or upskill, please come out to CCP.
And, and I'm going to wrap up on this one part, right? I'm going to keep it a bean with you. I do want to follow up with you because he did ask a real, real direct question. And it wasn't really about all the other programs that we're actually going to be providing. He specifically talking about hiring people based upon rebuild. And so I do know for a fact, our diversity and inclusion numbers are outstanding when it comes to, to rebuild initiative, but I am going to do a deeper dive when it comes to- to how many young people actually hire on those jobs. And so I, you have my word and my commitment to do a deep dive and follow up to see, based upon our diversity and inclusion numbers, which I know for a fact are outstanding, but that is a valid question, how many young people actually participated? And on those sites, based upon the commitment that was made early on? And so I'll definitely figure out a way to follow up with you regarding those particular numbers.
And I just want to.
Okay, thank you.
And I just want to say that, I was just talking to Isaiah Thomas, I just said, hey, if him and Catherine Gummer Richardson wanted to come and do one of the trades events here in the district for the young people, you bring the young people, he said, and then we'll bring the event. So that gives the possibility.
And I'm gonna say one last part, and one last small part, right? Around the issue of gun bouncing in the city of Philadelphia, I'm gonna be brief, because a lot of times, when we go out into the community and we doing Peace Not Guns Walks or Engagement, a lot of people say there's nothing for our young people to do, right? That's not necessarily the case. We as a city have to do a better job of promoting what's available for our young people to get involved in. And so I think we can do a better job when it comes to getting the message out in terms of what's available, but also, also, I also challenge, same with my nana did with me when I was a young man growing up, but it's also a level of responsibility to go seek out the information, right? That's just the reality of it, right? I'm a dad, I have two boys, right, so I can take off the political hat, and I do my due diligence as a dad, right? To find out what programs are available for my two sons in the neighborhood. And about 99% of them are free, offered by the city of Philadelphia. I asked my colleagues who have children in City Council, what are you doing this summer with your children, right? So also there's some responsibility in terms of doing the due diligence, to find out what's available to take advantage of for your children. Go ahead, man.
And he's talking about Islande Recreation Center, we have quarterly meetings, it's on time, it's scheduled, it's starting to fall, so be on the lookout for that. And if you haven't signed in, get more information, our lovely team that is back there will get, keep you abreast of information about things like that, so make sure you sign in tonight.
Hi, my name is Valerie Hayward, and I wanted to add something about the budget too, and about 65 and over. I'll be 69 this year, okay? I'm living somewhere where I'm like, I'm almost homeless myself, okay? Because my landlord, I'm on the second floor, I had to take it, I had no choice, okay? And I can't walk up and down those two flights of steps, so I throw my keys out. I get home visit from my doctor and they do x-rays and everything at my apartment too. Now, they won't do the fix-ups, but they want me to keep paying them, or I'll be having to get out, okay? I needed something on the first floor, or just, you know, just leveled for myself. There's nothing out there for us. And like I said, I'm 68 going to 69, okay? It's not like I never worked for you, because I did, okay? But now, it's like, they put us to the side and we're nobody. You know, after you get a certain age, it's like, well, well, you know? And that's not right, because before then, we were out there digging in the trenches too. So I don't appreciate that, I want to know, what is the budget going to do about us? Helping us find places where we don't have to be on the second floor and we don't have to do whatever. Right now, my toilet hasn't been fixed, I kept calling them. I have a non-working toilet for a week, a week. I called them and told them, she told me I had to get my own plumber, and I told her no way, because what's going to happen is, I'm gonna take it out the rent. Now, if she tries to put me out, we're gonna have a problem. Not only that, my refrigerator, it was leaking freon, I got sick, I got sick from it, okay? And I'm at Fifth and Fisher, I'm over top of that, the, the light store over there, that lady who got that t-shirt place on Fifth Street, she owns that whole block, okay?
Well, thank you, thank you, thank you, let me just share this with you. In the current proposed budget, the mayor's proposing a $2 billion housing budget, looking to increase the adaptive modification program. It will provide free accessibility modifications for individuals with disabilities, allowing easier access to and within their home. There's a proposed $2.3 million, that would go, 2.5, excuse me, 2.5, no, $5 million altogether, I apologize, $5 million altogether. And so if you're interested in that program, our team can help you apply for that, and so that you can get support services and that.
Yes.
There is a backlog, but the mayor's office is currently looking to.
Yeah, because they keep upping my rent, but they're not doing anything. And they know that I have to have a place because I'm, I'm an older woman, so I need it. And I'm actually, my money I get, I'm below the, I'm below the poor.
Better, yeah.
Okay, I'm below the poor level.
Yeah, actually Councilwoman Cindy Bass's office is going to be able to work with you.
Oh, okay.
Thank you for that part.
Okay. Oh, oh, are you, oh, well, thank God, okay, then, I came to what I thought.
All right, thank you. All right. All right, who's next? Over here.
Good evening, my name is Joseph Beiman, I live here in East Oak Lane, and I want to make a statement that we in East Oak Lane are very blessed to have the East Oak Lane Libraries, only a block away, it's an historic building, it's 114 years old, and it needs renovation, it needs a new roof. And the last numbers I heard were on the order of $2 million, I don't know if that number is still true, as one of the council persons mentioned, a lot of these estimates have gone up recently. But I also know that I saw in, from Councilman Phillips' Facebook page, that he's got a dedication for the West Oak Lane Library coming up later this month, I believe, and they spent on the order of $4 million for that, to renovate that, that building. And so before the situation gets critical at East Oak Lane, my question is, what can you do to find the funds necessary to repair the East Oak Lane Library, save a historic Carnegie library, before it is beyond restorable? And so somewhere, we've thrown some really big numbers out tonight, and I appreciate you're spending the, the money that way, but there should be some way to find the money and find it in the near term, so this library can be fixed, this building can be fixed before it is, is too far gone. So I thank you for that.
This is why I'm happy our colleagues are here tonight, so people can understand how important it is to our neighborhood. So one of the things that I asked the Free Library President to do, and he's going to do it, he, there's structural issues with every library in the city of Philadelphia. We've let them go to disarray for many years. So this year in the proposed budget, I think it's about 1.5 million dollars, they're going to use to do an assessment utilizing people who are doing this architecture work, to actually look at all of the libraries and come up with a plan on what funding is going to be needed to fix each one of them. He is highly aware of the East Oak Lane Library. I'm going to tell you that it's a priority for us, for me, and I'm, I'm working on trying to make it a priority for all of us in the city. And I think it's, it's going to, that's a very expensive library to fix up in terms of that roof, but it can be done, it can be done, and I'm, I will be talking to our colleagues about how to make that happen. So thank you for bringing that up tonight, and that way we can follow up.
And I, I thank you for following up on that, it's, you know, you've mentioned a million and a half dollars for the study, we already know that the roof on this place is going to cost more than that, and so it's, I think it's, I'm an engineer by trade, so the longer you wait to make the repair, the more expensive it's going to get, so I just, I, I appreciate you, I, I know it's a matter that you're already aware of, and I just ask that we try and do something to find the funds before the building gets too far gone.
No, I'm actually glad you brought it up tonight, so everyone else can hear it, and yes, this will be on, this will be important.
Thank you.
I, I, I'm glad you brought it up.
Thank you very much.
Seriously.
And we also have R cap dollars, we have R cap dollars, and we partner with the Senator and also the State Rep to also do the intergovernmental approach to bring some money, and Mr. Bellman as well, I don't know if it's your district, but they can also bring some of the money from Harrisburg and partner with us in City Council to make sure we take care of this library. I mean, I know y'all ain't just here just to be here, so might as well get involved.
Hi there, my name is Kelly McShane Tyree, and I am blown away by the work that you do with City Council. The fact that you have to sort through all of this minutia with your numbers just blows my mind. I was a professional actor for years, my parents raised their nine kids here in East Oak Lane, and I moved back from New York City because I love Philly. My parents, I'm really blessed by the fact that they raised volunteers, they raised children to show up for the community, because we always knew how hard you were working, and we also knew that we had to do our part. So East Oak Lane has a long culture and history of that. We have planted almost 1,000 trees here in East Oak Lane. We have, we have, for, for 17 years, we have done the Philly Spring Cleanup at the Oak Lane Library. We paint graffiti off of the SEPTA bridges, so we are absolutely about partnering. We raise our own money so that we can hire landscapers to take care of our public areas. That being said, I'm thrilled that the Oak Lane Library was brought up. Over 100 years ago, East Oak Laners pulled together and bought that land so that Carnegie would build a library there, and it's been the heart and soul of our civic heart and soul since then. So we can't afford for it to be closed for a day. We do bake and book sales so that we can make sure we've got programming for our children. We have a new lounge area for the teenagers, so that they can connect in fantastic ways there. One of the things, I am also a Realtor by trade, and I am very aware of folks who come to me and say, this is why I can buy a house and this is why I can't. We are in a middle neighborhood here, we, there is many of our fantastic middle neighborhoods that have delicate ecosystems, and I'm asking you to be as kind as possible to us homeowners and those who want to be homeowners, because that real estate tax, it goes up by $1,000 and that might be the difference between somebody being able to qualify or not. And these are young couples who want to move back to their hometown neighborhoods, these are people who grew up volunteering, who, I'm so blessed too, my brothers moved back and are raising their kids now, but we're all living right there on the edge. You know, we've watched our, our property taxes double, and we are aware that we have to play our part, please be kind to us. One of the things that also is extremely important are our regional rail lines, SEPTA. We need them. The reason that we can live here in the city, we want to be hip Philly folks, we don't want to be out there in the burbs, we want to be Philly folks. And we need that train line to leapfrog to Center City. Folks are starting to call this place Comcast North, that's pretty crazy, it's, it's wild, we've got folks who are working for the hospitals, we have students who need these trains, and so that is just something that's extremely important in terms of the budget.
Thank you, ma'am.
Please, please be kind.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. And we, we're doing everything we can do to fight for SEPTA as well, because it is a vital transportation mode that we use here in the city of Philadelphia. Councilmember Jeffrey J. Young?
So you, you did bring up a, a good point when it comes to the property taxes here in the city of Philadelphia. We have to make sure that our properties are assessed fairly, and so that's something that my office has been looking into as well, looking at how we tax our citizens. We all know that Philly is a, a city of neighborhoods, and each neighborhood is different, so just because, you know, a property might have sold for this amount of four blocks away, that, those four blocks is a totally different neighborhood, so we really have to incorporate that into our tax assessment system.
I just want to make a brief announcement, because I know we respect the pastor and we're going to be leaving at eight, and so I asked my sergeant-at-arms to shut down the line, and then folks just keep getting in the line, and so I guess they probably telling them, whatever, we're going to still send in the line anyway, but I did ask the sergeant-at-arms to shut the line down, so be respectful of people at times. The individuals who are in, we will take your questions, but here's how you can help everybody get a chance to get their question in, just be direct with your question. You take the whole two minutes to talk about a lot, but just ask your question, because we want to make sure we get as many people as possible, as we respect the pastor's timing for opening up the church for us.
Yep, I'll try and keep it quick. Good evening, Council, good evening everybody else, I'm Brandon Brissette, I live here in East Oak Lane. I got a few questions and a, a statement. We're talking about how a lot of the city's tax revenue doesn't come from the income, but I also heard when we were talking about our budget, that we were pitching the idea of a tax break for both residents and non-residents, what's the incentive for giving a tax break to a non-resident? Huh? Was, oh.
I'm gonna be real quick and just answer that first one, so when you're talking about a reduction in a non-residential tax, what we're talking about is reducing a portion of the wage tax that people who don't live in the city but work in the city actually pay. The wage tax is paid by both the employee and the employer, and so when you're talking about what we call the reverse commute on that, that's what we're saying when we're saying lower the wage tax, so we can try to make it a little bit more business friendly in the city of Philadelphia. This is Oak Lane, right? And so we talked about the soda tax earlier, clearly I live in Oak Lane, let's be honest, most of us go up 611 or up Shottanham Avenue when it's time to go shopping, right? And that's a reality, we're not really going to Islande Plaza, that's a real thing for us. So in order to get those Oak Lane folks to come back and shop and, and, and go to businesses on Oak Lane Avenue, right, and 66 Avenue, we need to do something to make it a little more business friendly, because at the end of the day, if you don't have a business that requires brick and mortar foot traffic, we're not doing a good job of incentivizing you to be here. You can look at Conshohocken, Plymouth Meeting and all of our surrounding suburbs and look at how well they're doing compared to the Ninth District. So that's the reason that we're looking to reduce that part of the wage tax.
Okay, and I guess that follows into my next question, I know that we are trying to lean towards more businesses, so we currently have a tax abatement for investors for 10 years who rehab residential or commercial properties. Council has pitched increasing that to 20 years. My question is, if I'm an investor, I get that 20-year abatement, what's stopping me from selling to the next investor at the end of my 20 years? Who makes up that tax, that 20-year gap that they didn't pay? Does that fall on us? I have to assume it does.
So real quick, that's a phenomenal question, and when you think about the proposal, first of all, it's not a blanket abatement across any place in the city of Philadelphia, it's specifically for certain areas. The thought process behind it is that if you have an area, and we can relate to this in Oak Lane, but if you have an area, the city of Phil-, sorry, Council President, I see him, I feel him looking at me, good Lord, sorry Pastor. If you have an area in the city of Philadelphia, and that area has a lot of blight, you're not collecting any taxes on that right now anyway, because it's abandoned. So the thought process behind that specific legislation is to, it's not a blanket abatement, it's to focus on specific areas where it's expensive to develop, we just talked about parks, where it's difficult to attract people to live and do something to try to spark the economy there. That specifically does not impact the people who already live there. If you don't know, Philadelphia is the number one city in the entire country, I'm 100% sure, I represent Philadelphia on multiple elected official-based organizations, we're the number one city in the entire country when it comes to programs to protect homeowners. So just because you see development happening on your block, and even if your taxes do go up, we have options for you, loop, homestead and things of that capacity. So hope that answered your question.
Yep, it did, thank you.
And, and really quick, the abatement is not just offered to developers or investors, if you own your home and you substantially rehab your home, you qualify for that abatement too. So that's something that we want to put out there to let folks know that you can, you can qualify for that tax abatement as well, it's not just for developers and investors.
All right, thank you.
Last question, bro, excuse me, we gotta keep people going, you can follow up with us after, go ahead, young, go ahead, sir.
Good evening, City Council President and members of City Council, my name is Dr. Anthony Jones, I live here in East Oak Lane and have been here for 40 years. So with that said, I was also a member of OLCA, the Oak Lane Community Action Association, and I was the chairman of crime and safety for a number of years. And my question is limited in scope this evening, very narrow, and it really comes down to, I received a brochure from City Council somehow, but anyways, a very glossy, nice-looking brochure that, you know, said different things about what you guys did, so I appreciate, you know, the work that you do. So it's not about non-appreciation, but, there's always a but, but the money, we look at money and the, the topics tonight have been money, we talked about the library, we are members, my wife and I, of the Oak Lane Library, we support, we give donations and things of that nature. So might this money have been reallocated? Because we know what you do, that, you know, you, you, there's ways electronically to do the same. there's ways, uh, electronically to do the same thing that you, you did that was, you know, delivered to us, I, I think. Because also, I'm a professor of music technology, and knowing that there are many things that, you know, can be done. Just about ninety, if my numbers are right, ninety-five to ninety-eight percent of the population have some sort of device with that. The main issue that I really wanted to bring up is here in East Oak Lane is safety. So, now, for years, we have asked about speed bumps and another, other issues in East Oak Lane. And for some odd reason, we always feel like we're the stepchild. I'm also a block captain, so I hear from constituents on my block and various other blocks and from various other block captains. I'm right down the street from Elwood School. And one day, it's going to be headlines in the Philadelphia Inquirer, "Children Murdered By Car Speeding Down the Street." And you did some around the school, but it's been four years in the asking that, you know, neighbors have called, uh, called council's office and said, you know, "We would like to have these speed bumps starting at the light at 66th Avenue down to the stop sign." They managed to get sixty, okay? Up to sixty in the speed going down to that school. So, once again, what is council going to do for these safety issues? And we pay a fair share of taxes. I've never complained about paying fair share of taxes for the city, but would like the services. And, you know, and it's about the services. So, I think most people get disgruntled over not having the service they're looking for. The Oak Lane Library, we need, you know, that taken care of. We need, you know, a number of things. But people kind of look at East Oak Lane and say, "Huh, those guys got nice houses, they got money, and maybe we don't need to." And a lot of people feel as though it's not fair because paying same amount of taxes and going from there. Thank you very much, council.
That's a nice hat you got on. I know you got money. You look like money as soon as I see you. Soon as you start walking, I say, "He's somebody." Soon as you came in here. So, I'm gonna turn it over to the district council person. But, um, in regards to the 2024 year review, um, the very glossy, um, glossy, um, brochure that you received to talk about what we have done, um, in the past is because, listen, as elected official, the ownership is on us to get the word out. And so, some people say, "Well, why didn't you save the paper and only do social media?" You have to also remember, we deal with the digital divide here in the city of Philadelphia. Maybe in Northwest, everybody is online, right? But you have some parts like deep North Philadelphia, right? And deep West Philadelphia or in the bottom West Philadelphia, where folks aren't online. And our seniors who will cuss us out and say, "Well, boy, I don't want to go online. I'm old school. I want a piece of paper." And so, it was part of, it's part of my, my, my vision as the council president to make sure we continue to elevate in terms of our messaging and let you know all the things that we are doing because, to be quite frank, most of the time, we get beat up for what we're not doing. And so, we're not telling our story and letting you know the things that we are doing, which will never be enough. And we're okay with that. But at least you can go through and say, "Okay, well, at least we see as a body, they're all are working together on things that affect the city of Philadelphia." As well as, I'm sure your district council member will follow up with you on some of the things that you want to see done, um, individually. And so, to some of the quality of life issues, I'm like, "Didn't you pass a bill for speed bumps all across the city?" I mean, tell you the truth.
Get Councilman Phillips a rest real quick. I was gonna answer this one for him. It was getting a little hot, and we've been at it since nine-thirty, right, Councilman? Um, so, Councilman Phillips actually passed a bill, one of his first bills when he got in the city council, that removed some of the bureaucracy that was needed to be able to allow speed bumps to be put around schools. We also just passed another bill that's going to allow us to put cameras around schools so when people speed during arrival and dismissal, we'll be able to have automated systems to address that. So, I, I live walking distance just like you do. I understand some of the issues. Around Elwood Elementary School is definitely a top priority for us as well as the comment around the library. But just know that these things take some time, right? We recognize it, it's on our radar. We've introduced legislation to expedite the process to the best of our ability. We've prioritized using technology so we can make sure that when those bad drivers are speeding during arrival and dismissal, we're able to use technology to catch them. So, give us some time. We promise we're on it. And again, we're in this neighborhood ourselves, so we see and fill those issues. So, thank you, sir. And I agree with Council President, you do look sharp.
This I recall to my mind, therefore I have hope. That's all I want to say. But I want to say thank you to the council because it's hard doing your job. I'm not a council person, and I'm really not a political person. My husband is. But I want to say thank you. And I guess my question would be, I, I've, I've been in this community for a long time. I think I first moved here when I was about twenty-five years old. I'm sixty-nine years old right now. And when I came into this area, um, it was when AIDS first started and substance abuse was really, really bad. And I just want to say to the people, we can do things for ourself as well. I had a conversation with someone the other day. I said, "If you know somebody that need a loaf of bread, give them a loaf of bread." You know, um, just, you know, we're gonna have to help each other even way back there. You know, um, I'm not bragging, but I'm telling you the truth that I opened my doors to women who are recovering from substance abuse, see? And when you give that real love and open your door, then you don't have to worry about these people doing their job. You know why? Because God gonna bless you, okay? To take care of who needs to be taken care of. The other thing I do want to ask a question, though. Recently, I had to get my forty-six-year-old son arrested because he has mental illness. And the 302 thing don't work. It doesn't work. They, uh, you spend all day there, you go halfway crazy. You gotta do this, you gotta do that. And then what, a week later, they're out? With mental illness, it's so tricky because you can't make a grown man at forty-six take his medication. You cannot do it. I've tried. I had him in my home so many times. My husband and I, uh, tried to help our youngest son. And it doesn't work because when they decide not to take their medication, they won't take it. So, each time they have an episode, it elevates. So, this time, when I got my son arrested, I happened to be on Facebook, and somebody posted this. "Oh, my son is home. My son is home. My such-and-such son is home." And do you know, two days later, such-and-such son killed her and his little brother? Mental illness is nothing to play with in your family or out of your family. We need help because the courts, when you go to courts with them, the only thing the court say, "Well, oh, I'm gonna send him the, I'm gonna ask the judge to send him to anger management." And I told the attorney, I said, "He doesn't have anger management. He has mental illness." Those are two different things. So, why are you keep run— and, and the other thing is that you're gonna put a bench warrant out on somebody you don't even know their name? How? They didn't even know my son's name. And I told him time and time again where his name was, is. So, now, he, I mean, I can't, well, I'm at a, I'm, I'm at a place where I, I did my mothering.
Thank you.
And there's a time where you have to, there's a line. Not stop being a mother, but you gotta stop helping. You gotta stop helping. So, that's where I am now. I had to get the restraining order. I had to get the eviction notice. And these things, they're not easy for a mother to do. But you have to do them to keep your child safe.
That's it.
You know, so, that's, that's all I wanted to say, really, is to say thank you, thank you, and thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, and so sorry, but there you go to.
Councilmember Marjorie Gilmore Richardson has a brief response? You gonna follow up? Okay, last and— Okay, one and then one, and then we're wrapping up. Go ahead, ma'am.
Okay, my name is Khadija Tavir, and I'm representing—
Ma'am, I know, well, Tom, I know you just got up, ma'am, but we won't, I won't, we won't be calling on you. It's this person and then, we, at some point in time, we have to cut the line off.
No, I was the last one.
No, somebody just jumped up behind you.
She was the last one. Okay, as I was listening to the education budget, I'm representing the Early Childhood Administration. So, as the mayor have the year-round school, I support it, but I want you to understand how it affects the early childhood programs. So, because the year-round school, when the daycares have Philly Pre-K all that ends in June, the daycares depend on the after-school program to run their programs through the summer. So, I want you, when you understand, when y'all doing this budget, please do not forget about the early childhood education programs in Philadelphia because we are the essential workers. So, this year-round school before and after will really hurt the early childhood field, the daycares in Philadelphia.
So, first of all, thank you for the work you do with children in the city of Philadelphia. Unfortunately, we have so many children with nothing to do after school that we probably don't have enough money on a city and state level to make sure all of them have options. So, know that as we continue to extend extended day, it's not going to have an impact on your work. We are a hundred percent sure of some of the issues that you're facing when the, uh, primary provider switch, Council President, I believe it was PHMC, and switched, and the providers weren't getting money. It was our office that worked with our state partners to be able to make sure that those resources were delivered. So, we will give you our word to let you know that as we expand and look to do more out-of-school-time-based initiatives, we will make sure that it's not done in a way that has an impact on your industry. And between my office and the other offices that's representing here, if you just leave your information, we'll work with everybody in the industry because we've already done it so far to make sure that we provide supports.
All we can do is, when they do that, make sure they partner, like you said you was gonna partnership with the charter school. They can also partnership with daycares, the high-quality childcare in Philadelphia.
You got our word. Absolutely.
As a partnership.
Absolutely.
And I have yourself on it.
Hold by, I, I know I answer it, right?
Uh, good evening. I'll make this very brief. I would just like to know is there another number other than 311 that will provide me a number for animal control? When I dial 311, the number they give me for animal control, I've left more than five messages, and no one has ever returned my call. Is there alternative number? Thank you.
If you follow up with Councilmember Phillips' office, what we'll do is we'll get you directly to the organization. It's actually ACCT. I remember last year, we just had to give them a lot of money because they said that if we didn't give them money, that the government was going to have to provide that service themselves. And I'm not getting no animals out your house. I'll answer the phone, I'll do a lot, but I'm not doing that.
It's not animals outside, it's dogs off the leash running in the neighborhood.
ACCT. So, we'll, so you can go around, you can go directly to the organization that's responsible for it. We can definitely connect with you, and we can make that happen. That's not a problem. And St. Ray Parker's office offered to help as well, too. Thank you.
Thank you so much for hearing me out.
It's cool, ma'am. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, good evening.
And that's it.
My name is Deborah Carlton. One question. I live in the Ninth District Council on Roosevelt Boulevard. There is no services from the city as far as clean and green initiative on Roosevelt Boulevard. And there's a million trees on the Boulevard. There's dirt and trash being thrown out of people's car windows, et cetera, that I'm daily have to pick up at seventy-plus years old. And now, I have this to contend with. So, when you guys stick those little things in the dirt and leave them there, I have to pick them up. So, I need to know where can I get help to clean up in this clean and green initiative that the mayor has?
Senator Street said you could talk to him. Roosevelt Boulevard is also like a state highway.
But it is a state highway. But I would also say, as supporting a district council member, because you did specifically say the mayor's cleaning green initiative, right? And we just have, we are spending a significant amount of money on that initiative. And so, between district member Phillips and Senator Street, we should be able to tackle that issue. But I know we have the manpower because we are investing heavily, heavily in the cleanup crews throughout the city of Philadelphia. I guess the question is, is it on their radar to tackle it? And also, Senator Street?
Quickly, I, I just want to say, look, my staff, um, I think Ms. Richardson from my staff is here. There are, yeah, she's in the back. So, there are programs there that are happening along the Boulevard. I think that's, I think you're talking about in, uh, it might be, uh, Councilmember Lazada's district where we share. But there are programs here. If you talk to either Ms. Richardson or Ms. Vaughn, we can connect you to them because maybe there's a spot they missed, and we'll make sure that they get out there. Phillips, is it Anthony's district? Okay, well, we'll make sure. Say what? We'll make sure that they get out there, okay?
So, um, before we wrap up, we have a brief presentation.
So, real quick, my name's Phyllis Coppinger. I am a committee woman in the Thirty-Fifth Ward, um, which is part of Councilman's district. For twenty years, fifteen, twenty years, we had a tree. I wish I had the picture. Catherine, Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson looked at it. You saw the pictures. Councilman Phillips came out to the block, saw the tree. I don't even think you were elected yet, were you? And said, "We're gonna take care of this." Now, I've been a committee woman for twenty years, so you know how many times I heard, "We're gonna take care of this." So, I am here tonight to represent our ward and our community